All right, I call this meeting of the Winthrop School Board to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sorry, Amelie, I was doing my final read through. All right. We'll call, is Catherine with us by Zoom?
No.
Okay. Tim?
Present.
Okay, Alicia here, Ivy here, okay, Amelie here, okay, David is not with us. And Catherine may join us by Zoom, she's doing her final presentation for her class tonight, so that takes precedence for sure. Any adjustments to the agenda?
None.
Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Board workshop on March 29th and the school board meeting of April 5th as written or with corrections.
So moved.
Set again. Okay, any discussion? Good, all those in favor? All right, there's a seat right here we can bring up for you.
Hey Joel, do you wanna just take this chair, I'll grab that one and scoot it over?
That works.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
All right.
Although it's kind of...
Any public comments? Any comments here?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I don't see any online. Okay, none. Superintendents report.
Okay, well, I sent mine out, I just couldn't quickly look at it. See, I have the tyco positions to where I wrote, oh, actually I do, I know I have something. Yeah, I wrote in here a little bit about the projects that have been started and I wanna add that to next week's meeting. And Joel will be here, be able to give us updates. It is pretty exciting, all the things we've been waiting for a long time to get started and to finally have them underway is really cool. And it's not without issue, so it's the first thing I wanna talk about. Obviously, the biggest issue is we are, we're gonna be, we have not had heat. We've sent out a notice to our families and our students over vacation. And then again, I think Sunday night, get sent out again, just letting people know there's no heat. And that's addressed appropriately or warmly, whatever word you wanna say. And I think there's been some, not a great deal of pushback, but I think people are cold and they're uncomfortable. And, you know, it's been a bit of a challenge, but it's, and people are like, well, why didn't we change the, you know, reschedule it or have it come, you know, do it at a different time. First of all, we didn't know we were gonna get March weather at the end of April and the beginning of May. And the other thing is, I think it's rather presumptuous to think that we can tell the contractors when they can come and go. We've been planning this for some time, and so this is their schedule. And we're not the only place that they're working on, and so we have to fit kind of into their schedule. So it just is bad luck, I guess, for lack of a better term, that this week is really cold, my hands are freezing as I'm sitting here. And next week's not gonna be much warmer, so I think it'd be one thing if it was, well, like today. If today was, today, right now isn't bad, if we had blue sky and sunshine, it would not be too bad even if it wasn't that warm though, 'cause the sun through the windows is nice, but it hasn't been there. So it's not much we can do about that, but I, it's, and it hasn't been a huge amount of, I actually haven't heard anything from the kids, I'm not sure. The students, sorry. And, but, you know, even if, when I was at the grade school and I've been at the middle school the last couple of days, well, today and, yeah, it was yesterday too, high school a little bit, but it's just a tough situation and we just keep saying, add it to the strange quirky things that we've experienced here in Winthropo the last three years. It's just like, you know, it's a great thing, but it can't just go off without a hitch, there's gotta be, you know, problems. The second thing is, I want to expound a little bit more what I put in the superintendent's report. I'm gonna spend a little bit of time talking about this before I, whatever. The, in here I talked about, on the agenda tonight is the probationary, the either probationary one to probationary two or the probationary two to continuing contract. And when I, I forgot that I had that in my report, so I wanted, wanna first acknowledge, we give Ivy some credit because I think the way you handled it was perfect. She had some questions, she addressed them to me, and not to everybody. And at first, I didn't recognize your numbers, I didn't immediately get back to, but we finally did catch up. And it just made me realize that probably, maybe none of you have been through this process, well, certainly you two haven't, so. And because we record this, it would be, I think, good to put it out there for people. This decision is always really challenging, because we basically have two years with people to decide if we wanna put them on continuing contract, which is our last chance to say that they're, you know, they're not gonna continue with us without having to go through a pretty challenging process, which I can tell you, in thirty-seven years of having to make this type of decision, I've never seen it happen where you, you know, the process that is generally considered accepted doesn't really happen. Usually, you make the decision within a first couple of years or you, you know, that you're, you are with, have to keep the people essentially for as long as they want to unless they do something really egregious. It's a challenging process because the way the statutes are written, it doesn't permit, it's rather, it's rather unfriendly, I guess is the best way to say it, and it's not, it's really, really challenging, sometimes it's more challenging than others. So, but the first thing is, whatever the circumstance, we can't talk about it publicly, we can't talk about individuals publicly. We talk about the process publicly, which is clearly what I'm doing. And so usually, I start working with the administrators, all of the administrators, much earlier in the year to say what's going on, is there anybody you're concerned about, what are you doing to be supportive, we're providing feedback. And in some cases, I'm more involved than in others, but, and then as we get to this point, we start, you know, have to make some decisions. And the toughest part, I think, for me personally, from a humanistic standpoint, is the probationary teachers are not, who are not renewed, are not entitled to just cause unless we give it to them. So generally speaking, the rule of thumb is you don't, you just don't provide a lot of information. And that's been my advice when I was a principal and superintendents were talking to me. It's my advice that for the last eighteen years as superintendent, when I'm talking to them about this really challenging decision. It's not necessarily, I want, you all should be aware, it isn't that the people who are not renewed are terrible at anything. Sometimes it's a matching process, sometimes it's a different set of circumstances. But the hard part is that generally speaking, you don't have a lot of real candid conversation, it's pretty generic. And one of the things we always, I tell my administrators, and I did when I was a building administrator, is that there are really two choices when it gets to that point. The candidate can choose to resign, or they can choose to be non-renewed. And I always, and up until very recently, have always had people resign because I think it's in their best interest to do so, because if you don't, if you get non-renewed, anytime you apply for another job, you have to check off on the box that you are non-renewed. And that's generally not considered a positive thing is when you're looking to hire somebody. So, and like I said, it's not always, I mean, it's in most, very rarely is it like this person couldn't go somewhere else or do something else and be successful. I have lots of people who have been non-renewed, who have gone on to jobs at other places and been successful. So it isn't, if you resign, it isn't necessarily a black eye, so to speak, whatever the case may be. There's lots of reasons and people, I think, in the business understand that. So it's, in this case, you know, Ivy had some questions and she wanted to know about, I know I'm trying to put you on the spot, I was just thinking about, you know, that there was some emails that were generated and there's been some other stuff that's out there. And her feeling was, why didn't we know more about this, this is the school board. And this is kind of the tricky, this is, that's an excellent question and something I wanted to make sure to address. One of the things, the tough parts in your role as school board members is that you have legally a quasi-judicial role, which means that if there's an appeal, if there's somebody who, whatever the case may be, wants to say that they have cause or were given cause and want to appeal the decision, then they can do that. And your job is, in any sort of appeal, is to be a hundred percent objective. You are, that's the quasi-judicial piece. If you are not objective, if you have information in advance, then you have to recuse yourself and you can't be a part of the process. As I said, it's never happened in my entire time doing this, but that's the hard part. Where I think I try as hard as I can to keep people aware as much as I possibly can, but also one of my roles is to protect you from those legalities. And so sometimes, you know, it's not possible to, you know, to share that information. And, you know, I do that when I can, and in some cases, I can't do that for those reasons. So it's a, it's not the, it's probably the worst part of the job in terms of making those decisions, but it's, you know, I've found over the years that it's been very, I felt good about the decisions. And you guys should know, if you two don't know, I'm sure Tim and Kelly have a little more insight. It's not what we, it's not what I want to do because it's, you know, my role is to work with people, to hire the best people who are gonna stay forever, because having constant turnover in your organization is not good. It's not good for the longevity and the consistency of the organization. So, you know, so when it happens, it's not done with, it's not done lightly, so, but it's challenging.
I just have a clarifying question.
Sure.
One of the things that you said was that when a teacher or a staff member is not going to be renewed, they don't get a lot of candid information. And I just wanna clarify, throughout the year or potentially two years that they're not yet under continuing contract, they are getting feedback from their school administrator about ways that they could improve if there is improvement necessary, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's not, we're not gonna talk to you, we're not gonna talk to you, we're surprised you're not familiar with that?
No, that would be contrary to what? Contrary to the, what I just said. I mean, our job is to hire people and to provide them whatever feedback is necessary to make sure that they're successful and, you know, we don't have a lot of turnover.
Okay.
A question for clarity from the public, was there being, no, sorry.
You just need to wait a minute.
All right, no worries.
We could, we have to ask questions first and then we can ask you. The next question that I have is about the lack of heat. Like right now, we've got this going on here behind us. Do any of the students have anything like this afforded to them?
So, students, no. The, and realistically, we haven't encouraged, the only place that we've had to take a specific approach to it was the SKCDC has guidelines around room temperature, so we had to provide heaters for the pre-K and the daycare. The daycare, they also have guidelines around temperature, so they, we put some in there. People have put, have brought heaters into their spaces and we have not employed the heater police to go, you know, find, see who's, you know, doing that. That's not really, we're trying to be as sensitive to the situation as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you.
So I can't tell you how many have had heaters and I'm not aware of any students that have brought a heater in, but you know, not really looking for them.
Okay. Does anyone else on the committee have any questions for Jim before we open up to questions?
I do.
Yes.
So that two-year, Mark, does that include like admin and ed techs and all that stuff?
Nope, it all, that's only for, by statute, that is only for teachers. I will tell you that we, you were a part of negotiations, but I employ that same standard for the administrators. When I, when I hire people here, they get one year and then two years. You were here when we did the administrators earlier, so there were some, I don't remember now, Sue was actually one of them, that get two one-year contracts, which is like a first probation, a second probation, and then they get a two-year, essentially a continuing contract. And if, so if, for instance, we were, I was gonna not have an administrator back after the second year, it would either be that I just would tell them that I'm not gonna renew their contract and they get to work those two years, unless they do something really egregious and then they are, then they can be terminated in stream. Ed techs have, by our agreement, there's no just cause for the first year. Up until very recently, and it's actually something we have to fix in our ed tech contract, I've talked to the association, the state statute used to say that hourly employees were not considered public employees for six months, so essentially they're at-will employees for the first six months. That law has actually recently been rescinded, but it hasn't really been reflected, our support staff contract doesn't reflect that. So anytime within the first six months, they can be let go as an at-will employee. And moving forward, it probably will be what's currently in the contract, that they have a year. You can let them go after a year, but it does entitle them to just cause provisions.
So if they have a year in their contract, we're gonna honor that, are we gonna fix that statement that says the six months?
For the ed techs?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we negotiated, we, we...
That's, I mean, not our next, but the one that...
No, teachers are next, and then it'll be the year after that.
Okay, now I have another question. So like letters of concerns, complaints, grievances, reprimands. Now, I know the confidentiality, which I respect, but do we get any type of notice that amongst the board that we have received this? You know?
No, you wouldn't.
So I might get some of that information as the chair, but really minimal. What Jim was talking about earlier about us being a quasi-judicial, if you get information from anybody that says Carly's not gonna be renewed, she, I'm picking that name because I think there's no teacher in that. She, this is how I feel about everything that she's done or hasn't done. So then you have that person's thoughts before you even hear from Carly?
Oh, I understand that, but I'm just thinking, the blanket statement of knowing that, you know, well, we received several complaints on a situation, just to kind of make us aware as board members that that is out there, so that we have some sort of knowledge that there are issues going on in school and what we need to do as a school board to help better things or improve things.
Some of those, well, all of them are personnel issues. Some of them, there might be a couple complaints about a specific teacher, but they might not rise to the level of asking them not to come back. And so telling us that they are there might not be great for that teacher.
Yeah, but I'm also talking like parents, like parents sent in letters of like, just, or committee, you know, people out in the community or anything. You know, it's nice to have some sort of knowledge that there is something going on in our community that maybe us as a board need to, you know, come together and...
I think if it rises to that level, then it does come to you, I think it has in the past. But generally, like, I think the way Kelly handled the recent situation, that's the way collective, because remember, you're not a board, you're not, you have no authority as a board, except for when you are convened at a duly called meeting. So I think the proper response is to direct any concerned citizens to the proper administrator to deal with it. And if it's something like this, it's an employment issue, it probably comes to me, not to the, to the building administrator.
Does anybody else on the board have questions before we open this up? Amelie? No, good. Okay, before we open this up to community questions, because I understand that there are some, I wanna just remind you that if you have questions about a specific staff member's situation, they cannot be asked here. We will not answer them, okay? So, you have a question?
I did, I have a question for clarity here. So presumably, based on what you're saying, that if a teacher, one of the teachers faces non-renewal, he or she should have a pretty good indication of that ahead of time based on things like evaluations, disciplinary action, that sort of thing.
Observations.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, that's interesting.
So it wouldn't be the first time, I mean, as I said, I've done this for, been that role either as a principal or a superintendent for thirty-seven years. And majority of the time, there's, you know, sort of like, I saw this coming, it would be the first time that people said, you know, that didn't happen.
Okay, and I have another question, and that is, so you have said that as superintendent, you would trust the people that you could have hired, the principals, so that really is essentially a principal's decision? And since the board is not part of that, that leaves that decision up to one individual. Because there's that lack of transparency, what is to prevent a decision, it's a pretty monumental decision, from being made on the basis of something very trivial, some, just a dislike or a perhaps desire to bring in someone else that they prefer just because they prefer them. What is, so if that decision is in the hands of one individual who doesn't have to justify it to anybody, okay, I think that that leaves you in a really vulnerable place.
Well, that's an excellent question. The, from my perspective, I think I've heard that kind of statement in the past. I don't think it is as singular as you're making it sound. The, I already said, it's not early, probably, but we have to do the continuing contract by February, so right after we do the continuing contract, people, then we start talking about the process of who we have concerns about. And I can tell you, any of the administrators can tell you, can kind of talking about it even beyond that for the people who are in the second year. And so I'm very much involved in that, and I think there's a reason that the statute is really clear that nobody, the superintendent, you know, I, it sounds like you're insinuating it might be the principal, that be the singular, might possibly have that issue. And I don't think it is, nobody comes before this school board by statute to be elected unless they're nominated by me. So yeah, is my, is my decision influenced greatly by the principals? Absolutely, but it's not, it's not blindly done by that. And so, you know, ultimately, it, as I said, it's a really tough decision, it's not always an easy decision, sometimes it's tougher than others. And it's, it really is based upon, you know, what are the conversations, what are the concerns, what are the, what are the opportunities to try and adjust, you know, the situation? And it's really hard because sometimes it's a very, very gray decision. And I will say, as tough as the decision is to make, I was trained, and I'm pretty liberal in respect to a lot of things, but when it comes to make a decision from probationary to continuing contract, it's somebody that I want, everybody to have a hundred percent confidence that there's no issues. Because once, once you go beyond year two, it's a, it's not a virtual impossibility. In fact, the association would say it's, it still leans heavily towards the administrators, but that's not been my experience nor has it been the experience of most of my colleagues.
Understandably so. One last question that seems to be a, there's a missing logic piece here. So if an individual who is not renewed is not given cause, you said that an opportunity for appeal exists if that individual wants to address it to the board based on, you know, to refute a cause, but he or she's not given a cause, so...
Sadly, you are a hundred percent accurate, and that's why I said it's probably the most challenging decision we have to make because you don't have cause, the individuals don't have cause unless we give them. You know, I think places where I think it's been, I don't even know what the right word is. Our attorneys will tell you that ultimately, unless it's something really egregious, a age discrimination or sexual, whatever, the type of, you know, unless it's those types of protected class discriminations, then it's, it's, schools have this very limited window, and it used to be three, to sort of decide if they wanna keep the people for, you know, for a long, long time. And ultimately, I know it's hard sometimes to see that, but the goal really is to keep people for as long as you, you know, you possibly can.
Sure, absolutely, I would understand why, that would make sense. I'm just pointing that out, that then in effect, there is no process for appeal.
Well, it's, so, yeah, it's exactly what I said, is what I mean. It's, it is our intent to not provide anything that would be perceived as cause. You know, like if you, if you had a continuing contract teacher, you have to, have to, by statute, provide cause.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the community? Okay, all right, thank you. Appointments, reservations, retirements, transfers?
Yeah, and you're gonna see, as we're getting towards the end of the school year, there are gonna be a number of these types of things people are leaving. I don't want, I don't like to talk about the individuals, some of the, I look at this and I'm pretty, you know, bothered by, and I will be, I know other people who are gonna be leaving, really bothered by them, but it's, it's just different circumstances for all of them, so...
Well, and sometimes now we're at the point where people are getting ready for next year, and so they have to submit their resignation in order to go somewhere else.
Yeah.
So we will start to see those, those kind of changes happen between now and then.
Yep, that's very much the case.
Okay, all right, school board cherry board. I don't have a report so much as just some comments, don't look at my stuff. I wrote in red because you can't see it. So I guess I have two major comments. The first is that I hope that everybody had a really restful vacation and that your first week back was a good one. I'm sorry, it's cold. Two... Mr. DuFoy?
Yes?
Um, this is specific to the humanities night, but I hope that you can get a message to one of the students for me, please.
I will.
Okay. There was a gentleman who was doing stand-up in the coffee house, and it was relatively quiet and kind of uncomfortable for him because people weren't laughing out loud. But I need you to let him know that Will has been repeating one of his jokes every single time someone drives past our house really fast. And it stuck, and he thinks it's the funniest thing in the world. And so if you could just let that gentleman know that it did hit, it just took a little while.
I will do that.
He, I could tell he was uncomfortable. And I think that anybody who was up there doing anything was pretty brave to put themselves out there. Continuing on with humanities night, I know I saw Tim there and I saw you as well, I don't think I saw you, okay. It was a huge success, I was so impressed with everybody who made it possible, all of the students and community members and staff who participated. I took some pictures of some amazing stuff that you did, Ms. Longo. I wish that I had thought or known to bring money with me though, that's, I don't generally carry cash, so the stuff that was happening, like the food that was happening in the cafeteria, I didn't know to bring money. So next time I will. But it would be nice to have that kind of things-for-sale noted. I had a great time. I missed out on things, there was too much to see and too much to do, and I wish I could have gone back again and again.
I will too.
Yes, I... I saw you and you were there, and you were there, okay. Committee reports, finance?
No meeting.
No meeting, okay, policy? Other than what we'll do this afternoon, do you have anything to prepare?
Yes, we met yesterday.
Okay.
And we did go over policy IKF, DJR dash R1 and JJE, and JJEB, and we did, we got the changes?
Get changes? No.
Yeah, the changes, they're in the pack, yeah.
No, well, we will get to the stuff... No, well, we will get to the stuff here as we get there. Um, and then I'll rely on you to kind of lead us through those, that'd be awesome. Uh negotiations, we don't have any updates right now, we're not in a negotiation cycle right now. Um curriculum, she's on, and I don't think that she has anything other than your administrator report? Okay, perfect. Um, all right, so let's go through the administrator reports. Uh we'll start with the grade school, and I see Debbie's here, I don't see Debbie online.
Debbie is not gonna be here tonight, but Jolene's here.
Okay. So, um, I'll start really quickly. I am excited to see that you are partnering with the PTA to do the CDOGS thing, I think that's awesome. Um, I love the walk around the block and, and giving some, some praise to the lifeguard, who I will forever call him instead of a crossing guard. And then for me, the last thing, um, no, I guess that's both, it was both of them, was about the, uh, the walk and the lifeguard. Um, anybody else have anything for Ms. Grant? Oh, Ms. Grant on.
Mrs. Grant's in the report show.
She is, I just saw her pick her name. Nope, okay. Um, is Lori on?
No, Lori's at, um, the reason I'm covering at the middle school from today to my Thursday, she's finishing her last year's, well, her only year as the MP president, so she's at the spring conference. She's probably doing a, a speech right now.
So, I have some questions for her, if you can share them.
Megan, can you help me?
Hello.
Gramps? Okay, um, can you tell me more about the May tenth gift walk fundraiser and the um bottleless bottle drive?
I lost audio there for a second, I don't, I don't know if it's because you're right close to Jim's computer or what, sorry.
It could be. Um, can you tell me about the, the gift walk fundraiser and the bottleless bottle drive?
So I haven't been involved in those eighth grade fundraisers, um, that's not a piece of the pie, but I can tell you traditionally, um, the middle school had done a cake walk fundraiser, um but because we kind of modified our wellness policy, the eighth grade team has worked on getting donations or crafts that students have made, um whether it's from local community members or families, and they now do kind of a gift walk. Um, it's actually, I watched it last year, kids are moving around for like a half hour, um it's kind of like musical chairs, um but with dots on the floor, so I'm sure Ms. Mail can give you more information about what those fundraisers entail and, and how to prepare families and students for that, but I, I can't, sorry.
Okay, and then I have two other questions. Um, did the middle school do the pass survey? You, okay.
Yep, the pass survey was for um all students in the entire district.
I saw it in the grade and high school, but not in Lori's, so I wasn't sure. And then, um, the last part of Lori's um report talks about next year and the schedule planning. Um, do you know if there's a plan to keep the flex and fun, fun flex sessions?
So I think they've only had their first of several scheduling committee meetings. They did recently put out a survey to staff, I'm not sure if they're planning to send one out to students or not, but they're collecting some data. Flex was new this year, um, teachers this year also had um planning in content areas, which has pluses and minuses, and so some information on whether it makes sense to try to do common planning in grade level versus content area. Um, there's, there's a lot of really good discussions going around um the schedule right now, so I'm not exactly sure where they stand with flex, but um there's been a lot of changes, so collecting that teacher feedback is really important. I'm sure that there'll be more updates to come.
And I, I can add to that because we have had some conversations about working on the schedule and stuff, and I know that the plan right now is to continue with flex.
Okay, great. Um, kind of an overall middle school, high school comment, I'm really happy to see that we are making a concerted effort to make sure that those transitions from grade school and middle school and middle school to high school are um really well-founded and that the kids in the new schools get that first day to themselves, which I think is kind of huge for, for getting, you know, your sea legs for.
So related to that, before Lori left for her um conference today, we, she and I had a chance to meet, and she was particularly um excited about the work that she and Jolene have been doing with the fifth graders to sixth grade. She feels really good about that, and I know we've had conversations earlier that, and just one of the, one of the things I loved about being at the middle school, I like doing the transitions on both ends, and I think, uh, I know the high school and the middle school, that Jay and Lori have done a lot of wor- a lot more work this year, and there's more coordination with the uh eighth graders to ninth grade. Uh, that's really good, it's part of that seamless, you know, pre-K twelve um vision.
Excellent. Anybody else have any questions or comments for the middle school report? Okay, high school report. Um, I think the only thing I really pulled out of here that I wanted to commend you on is uh the, the um mud week, the success of the mud week. I'm, I'm excited to hear more about that once you have that information.
She's working on, on the data right now, so I'll, I'll get that finalized for the next report.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the high school?
I'll ju- I'll just second, um, like humanities night is definitely, as long as I'm here, I'll a hundred percent support whatever's needed to keep, let that grow.
Yeah, it was, it was excellent. The vision was, I think, the outcome was bigger than what I thought the vision was, and that was so cool to see.
I think the music part where they brought in outside community members was a great way to show support with the community.
So cool, yeah. Next year may be a community choir.
He also put the play a little bit earlier.
Yeah, we had to leave before that. Um, anybody else for the high school? Okay, um, special education report. Humanities night, because that's where our heads all are. Um, I had a chance to talk to some of the students and staff from the Leaf and Bean and um loved hearing what the students had to say about how much they enjoyed doing that, even though some of them would have preferred not to be behind the table that night. Um, I think that they're really enjoying it, and I think it was an awesome choice. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, Megan, you're up. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the director of teaching and learning? I do. Um, Megan, how come it's taking until late summer to early fall to get the MEA results back?
So that's actually pretty customary for the MEA. Um, this year they are doing some benchmark activities, um as far as setting expectations, and it is the first year that they're doing the through-year model. Um, and so the, again, the through-year model's gonna give us two scores. It's gonna give us the RIT score, which is what we're used to getting from the NOEIA, and this year, again, they need time to migrate things over and make sure things match up. Um, going into next fall, we're looking at that being a more uh regular turnaround that we're used to, so twenty-four to forty-eight hours after completing the test, which will be wonderful for our goal-setting and making this data useful, um and applicable for our teachers and students, so excited about that. But yes, this summer we are gonna wait for it. Um, and in the spring, every year, we're gonna be getting that second measure, which is that criterion-based at above um stated expectations, and that's kind of the piece that's always going to lag behind because that does involve it being more criterion-based versus just nationally normed. So, um, that score only will come in the spring, and so that will potentially be lagging, but the RIT scores should be right on um with the expectation starting this fall.
Okay.
Great question.
Um, and then the last question that I had for you was about the new um ESSA formula, instead of using the free and reduced. Um, so you may not know that the system that pulls the information about the food stamps is the system that I work in every day, and so I'm a little bit nervous, and I have a question for you. Um, is it based on families who receive food stamps and where their residential address is? Or is it based on school records in the computer system? Because those are potentially two very vastly different numbers.
So Jim, you might be able to support this, it's our direct certification number, so it's part of what we can access in synergy in NEO. So uh my assumption is it's based on enrollment.
Well, it is based on enrollment, it's also based on the direct cert list, this historical data. Um, and it's like, it, it's better now than it's ever been because once you are, uh, once you are quali- once you qualify for free and reduced, then you stay that way for, I think it's five years. Um, and some, I haven't seen this happen yet, but, but the only way you come off the direct cert list is if you actively say, I'm no longer, I should no longer qualify, please look at my numbers again. Otherwise then it comes, so I'm not sure that answers your question, though.
It doesn't, but I know who to talk to to get that information and all, you know.
Well, we get the direct cert list, obviously, from the Department of Education.
Yeah, it's the, it's the DHHS part that makes me a little bit nervous, um, because depending upon.
That they're disclosing that, or?
No, no, no. Uh, depending upon the source of the data.
Okay.
Um, so I'll ask the food stamp program manager.
Yeah, it has changed, because the more I think about it, I mean, things have changed so much over the time. Almost forty years that I've done this, I don't even wanna tell you what we used to use for um determination, and it was, it had, it's always had to do with, with income. But it's also had to do with education, household education, which is, which was really bad.
Okay.
You should, I feel like I'm interested.
Yeah, I, once I get that information, I should, I don't, I think he's in the office this week, so I will. Yeah.
So does this change how, uh, will, will parents have to do the free and reduce um forms every year?
It's still supposed to, yeah. Yeah, we, and we're workers who wanted to.
Yeah, what I can say, I know that the department, I meet with um the commissioner of education bi-weekly. Um, as, and Lori does as well. Um, and I know they're looking at this, and there's some changes that are gonna be happening. Um, if you send me that question, I actually am there tomorrow with the commissioner and deputy commissioner, and I can ask that as well of them, so on the department side as well as the DHHS side.
Yeah, and, and kind of related to that, or actually related more to your question, and, and Mr. Dufour may have more insight to this, or this Mr. Dufour, either Mr. Dufour might have insight. Uh, we've been working with Power School people, and there's some um forms and stuff that we, that we can push out uh that we think will be a better response if indeed we end up having to collect that data.
Okay, excellent.
Is that act- and that's an over simplistic way of saying it, but.
Yeah, I believe so. I, I haven't done much in the way of like custom forms and stuff, but I know, um, Jay, you have somebody you work with on that, right? Yeah.
And Megan's been working with him too. Yep, oh, she has her hand raised.
Yeah.
So I do wanna also just let the board know that this is in direct relation to the ESSA, which is our title grants. This is not in relation to any other funding calculations, and we were told that it, it is still going to need to be collected. So in the meeting where they released this, it is about how they take their large sum and allocate their state-level title funds to specific districts. And so I do still wanna make it very clear that we are supposed to be collecting that data. We want it to be um in support of other funding streams for sure, so it's not something that we can kind of shrug at quite yet.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions for Megan? Okay, um.
Alexis is not online.
Okay, um, any questions or comments for the dean of students' report? Okay, um, I think we kind of talked, you know, a lot about what sh- what was in here already, but um I am really excited to hear about the eighth graders joining the high school for the day of caring and how that outcome works out. I think that they're gonna be really excited. Uh, and three hundred and fifty people at the humanities night, that's amazing. Amazing.
That was a lot of positive energy.
Every student. All right, any other questions or comments for Alexis's report? Okay, um, and Joel is also not online and not here.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, um, do we have any idea of when the new boilers will be installed?
So Joel is gonna do a comprehensive report next week, so I, I'm saving, let's wait till then. Yeah, and just for example, this is not gonna answer your question again, but um the group that's doing the boilers, because we have two different companies installing, um, same company's doing the middle school, high school, and, because there's four boilers up there, and then we have another company that's doing the grade school, and they pulled the boilers out during vacation, and they couldn't, they're, they're not into the, putting them in yet because they have another job, so they, you know, can't move things around, so.
Do we know when that will be, do we have any idea when that will be done, or?
I, I think Joel can give you the best timeline next week when he, when he talks, yeah.
Um.
He will also, just so you know, and this is more for, probably for the, anybody who might listen to this recording, he'll also give you updates on the fire suppression system, there's been a bit of a snafu in that. Um, the, uh, they'll probably talk about the turf field, which isn't our, which isn't our project, I keep saying that all the time. Uh, he will definitely give you an update on the lighting retrofit, um, and where, where the, what the timeline, the timeline will be a big part of the report for all of those things, so it's pretty exciting to have all those things going.
Okay, um, and I think the last comment that I have for Joel's, and I wanted to talk to you as well online because I know I mentioned it to you directly, but um I didn't say it out loud. Uh, Mr. Dufour included um your award in his update, and I know I personally congratulated you, but um I wanted to say it out loud here too. Um, and also, Sophie, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, anybody else, questions, comments about Joel's? We'll get some more information um at our next meeting. Okay, um, Erin is not online, she is not here um for the school nutrition. I'm glad to hear that um the number of meals being served is increasing, I think that's excellent. Um, does anybody have anything else for food nutrition? Okay, all right, and um you saw the flyer for the summer kids' club for kindergarten through sixth grade. Um, there's an update, I guess this is just a copy of.
Well, that's part of the next agenda, uh, not the next agenda either, the next thing is students' club.
Um, okay, so I think that's it for administrative reports. National honor student, hey, forty-five minutes, it's not that bad. Um, who's going first? Uh, voluntold, one of you, unvolunteer.
I wrote Brooke's name down for us, maybe she should be first.
I, I can, I can go first.
Way to go, Brooke.
Then I wrote Aaliyah next.
Okay.
I'll have an order here.
Push harder.
Oh, yeah, Sophie, I'm just gonna back to the.
People move for you, I've seen them move.
Hello, I, I'm Brooke, for anyone who doesn't know me, for my senior service project, I took over the Rambler Rack. The Rambler Rack is a legacy project that was established by Kerrigan Anazuski and was carried on by Mark Noran. It is a resource that is open to both students and staff at the Brooklyn High School, where people can donate their old clothes and pick out new clothes for free. The clothing industry generates greenhouse gases during its production, manufacturing, and transportation of every garment made. Thrifting clothes is a more sustainable option because it requires fewer resources to be used by recycling old clothes that can, that can become timeless outfits. This project introduces sustainable fashion to our school. It was important to me this year to make my, to make the Rambler Rack my own, so Mr. MacArthur and his students took the time to build a brand-new rack for me to use since I wanted it to be a bit more minimalistic in order to avoid the clothes becoming cluttered. Um, Mrs. Burgess and the group of students that she worked with helped me by washing and drying the new donations before they go up on the rack, and any clothes that are left over when I switch out the clothes are further donated to a taxous closet at our town's local clothing ministry. Um, Ms. Marshall, our school's librarian, also gave out raffle tickets to anyone who donated to the Rambler Rack for a chance to win a library prize as an incentive to donate. And I just wanna give a thank you to Ms. Shaw and Mr. Dufour for working collaboratively, collaboratively with me on it and just being overall very positive supporters of the Rambler Rack. One of my favorite ways that I made the Rambler Rack my own is by decorating it for the major holidays. And this is what it looked like before, and so I've done like that, started organizing it a little bit. And the major holidays that I decorated it for were Christmas, Valentine's Day, Saint Patrick's Day, and my latest design was Easter. Um, the Rambler Rack was something that I always took advantage of in the past, so I felt super connected to this project, and the clothes have been renewed over nine times since December, actually ten, because I just put up a new batch of donations. Um, my hope is that the Rambler Rack continues to flow and grow, grow and flourish for years to come.
Flow's good, it is good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Brooke?
You're off the hook.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so for my senior service project, I did school library inventory. Um, the purpose, when choosing to help out the library, it'd help our librarian, Ms. Marshall, and take stress off her so shoulders, with the multiple tasks that are expected and needed when managing a library. When doing inventory in the library, I go through each bookcase, look at each book, determining whether or not we should keep the book. And this creates more space in the bookshelves for new books. ensures books in the library are not outdated and makes the inventory more organized. Plus, um, personally for me, when I was a freshman, I enjoyed spending time in the la, library, and I did a couple of tasks here and there helping our former librarian, Ms. Anazuski. Um, when first beginning my NHS project, I started off by doing small tasks to familiarize myself with the library and how things worked. And also while doing this, I had to begin research on how inventory works in a library and what the necessary steps would be to do this, since this was new to Ms. Marshall and I. Um, to start things off, I simply just put away books for her when people would return them or if she had new books in store. I also did decorations here and there, cause Ms. Marshall's hung them up in the past. And then, once I began doing my research, I had to create a map of our library, which is shown right there, to know, um, like where was nonfiction and where like magazines would go, and just multiple different types of books. Um, the process of doing inventory, after creating the map, I leave a book section to know where they'd be. And first, uh, I had to pick a book section that I would start with, and then weed out any books that looked old, damaged, or untouched. And s, uh, third, I would take the unwanted books out of the system and offer them to students for free. And whatever books were not taken would either go to Goodwill or Salvation Army. Um, for the last step, we'd put out a list of the inventory and check off bo, books that are in or missing. And as the result, that was before and after of like a bookshelf that was back in the conference room, there was a lot of old books that hadn't been touched in years. And then, here's just, um, more books that I was at and collected. And the left and middle one just show before and after of how the books looked on the shelves. And then on the far right shows the little display I've had, um, and I plan to do this un, uh, until I graduate. And recently, we had books out up until February break, and we brought them to Goodwill. And I'm currently working on getting a new load of books out on the table for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Emma.
Okay.
All right, so. I'm, I'm up, and for my project, I did, I created dog and cat toys for recycled t-shirts. So I chose this project because along with my love of animals, my family has had a close relationship with the kind of body community society. And I'm, I've seen they post on social media and stuff for them asking for donations, and I just think it's a nice creative way to make use of these unwanted t-shirts. So, this is some, uh, like how I made them, so for the dog toys, I kinda just sprayed it them like that. And this is the cat toys, so I had some that I sewed and some that are knotted. And then these are pictures of this basket is all of them that I made, and this is a picture of me delivering them. So, in the end, I was able to reach my goal, and on March twenty-third, I delivered forty dog toys and eighty cat toys. Along with the toys I made, I also donated small soft blankets and towels, as well as what was left in the container of catnip I had purchased to make the cat toys. Um, as soon as I handed the members of KBHS the basket, they went straight to the cats, giving them the toys. And they were also appreciative, which made me really happy. Um, I still have some left over shirts, and I hope to be able to do this again over the summer.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all.
Thank you. I think they'll have fun with those when they finally get into their new space too, and they have more things to play.
Hey, Sophie.
Hello. I'm Sophie, for anyone who doesn't know me, and my project is called Care Bags for the Homeless. And so, growing up in Southern California made me aware of the homeless population from a young age, so when I was assigned to do a senior service project, I knew I wanted to do this. Um, and I've always wanted to make a positive impact on the community, but I never really know, knew how, like as a child, so I knew that I wanted to do this project. And it was previously run by Ella Misha, and then last year was Maddie Perkins. Um, so the goal of this project is to work to better the daily lives of homeless people in nearby towns and cities. Because the issue of homelessness in our country is so vast, my project may only benefit a small number of people. However, I want to do whatever I am capable of to help those accessible to me. So each bag contains a bottle of water, a granola bar, and some peanut butter crackers. And I just keep a few in my car, so that when I'm driving around like Augusta or Portland, I, and I see someone, I can just hand it out to them. And I also gave some to my friend Leah, she helped me. So in January, I handed out five bags, February eight and March four. I forgot to update this, I did a couple in April too. So, I did, this, here's a little map, I did seven in Augusta, seven in Portland, and then over February break, I drove down to Rhode Island to visit my sister, so I got some in Boston and Kingston, Rhode Island too. So I got around to helping states, which is nice. And then, there's some pictures, my assembling, stocking my car, and yeah, my friend Leah. Yeah, that's all.
It's pretty fun to see, well, fun's not the right word, rewarding, I think would be the right word.
Yes, it was, it was satisfying.
To see somebody's face when you're not just handing them a dollar, but you're handing them something that they can actually use right now.
Yeah. Yeah, it was very satisfying, yeah. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. You have a question?
Yeah.
Um, I think either Sophie or Brooke, you can answer this. Um, Brooke, I think you mentioned that your project was a legacy project, do you wanna explain what that is to, to the board?
It just means it was started by, um, a previous senior on NHS who's graduated.
Okay.
And mine was particularly Ella Misha program because, uh, Ella Misha thought she could carry and started it, and then she kinda handed it off to Martin Orton, and then I carried it on, so I just figured that was a way to give them credit.
Awesome, and yours' legacy as well, right, Sophie?
Um, yes, I'm not sure when, when it started, the first, you know, the Ella started.
Yeah, Ella started.
Yeah, Ella Misha started it, and then Maddie and me.
Maddie.
Has anybody showed interest to take them on?
I, I have, but I'm.
Mm-hmm. Our current juniors, I'm about to put out an email asking if I even wanna pick up a legacy project. Um, so that they can talk to these people before they're graduated, and, um, but they don't have to declare their projects till the fall, so, um, we'll see. And in the fall, you know, we'll have another induction, I'm sure we'll have more people coming in that will need to also pick up a project, so.
Yeah, I don't think there was one exactly like yours, but was there something like that, like?
Uh, yeah, last year, Avery Silva kinda did the same thing, she did dog, just dog toys, so I wanted to like expand it a little bit more.
Okay, my cat would appreciate that.
Sorry, I had to share some information.
Okay.
Okay, any questions, comments for any of our NHS students for Ms. Shaw?
You did awesome.
You did, you did awesome, thank you, your presentations were good, you spoke clearly, not too fast, it was great.
Thank you.
I'm glad to see the way that you are positively impacting our community and the greater community and all of New England. That's what you can say from now on. All right, thank you, feel free to stay, but if you'd like to go, you are welcome to go.
We still run.
We won't hold it against you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night, Erin.
You too, thank you.
Yes, can I just say?
Not you, Ms. Shaw.
This makes us more than fun, this is what I like to see is stuff going on in the actual.
Fun's over. All right. Mr. Hodgson.
So this is, um, says budget discussion on the agenda, but we, um, did, remember this agenda was put together quite a while ago now, so it's a little, we were, things kind of came together really nicely for us, I think, in terms of the budget. So, we had two, three meetings ago, we were having some discussion about how we were going to, um, involve the community, because it was thought, I thought it was gonna be really tougher. And I'm not saying we shouldn't, I just, I think the path is, is this feels like a more normal, um, budget, I think that everything that's, that's in here is pretty easily explained. Um, so that's why I put that, um, the additional information on your, uh, that I basically gave you back on, on, sent out on, uh, April eleventh. It was for the three twenty-nine packet, I just, I just updated on four eleven, I, I added the number eleven on there. Um, and it, it's just, I anticipate that I would put together some sort of article for the, um, for the, now that we have the advertiser back, uh, for the advertiser, and that's, would also be put on our, our website, so that people can have sort of readily, readily access the information. Cause I think it says it all here.
Yeah.
And that's, I guess, sort of, wanted to give you guys sort of one last shot, something you wanna think about me adding, or whatever.
I think one of the things that Catherine had mentioned, um, was asking if either of our student representatives or any of the other leadership team would be interested in helping to create some visuals, um, to get that information out. Cause having this list of stuff is good, but not everybody will take the time to read all this, but if they can see a quick visual, that could be really helpful too.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't, doesn't work for me, but that doesn't mean I'm not the audience, so I have to pay attention to that.
That's correct.
But I, I think, um, I thought of that meeting, Amelie said something about to graphic design class, or, I don't, where's Ms. Shaw?
Oh, it's for some finance class, I'm not sure how that would be like more things to decorate, you know?
Okay.
That's, it's kinda late in the year for that to happen.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, putting it just on the list is
No, I'm not, I'm.
fine, but I think it will be consumed very well, as far as people don't spend a whole lot of time reading.
Yeah, I think, I'm trying, I think that, I guess that's what I'm saying, what are the, pick one or two bullet points that we can put into some sort of graphic, um, display? And I'm not, as I look at it, the one that I, that, and I think thanks to Tim mostly, or he at least got the ball rolling. The one that, that sticks out the most to me that I want to, like, what I want the people in Winthrop to know, especially those who are feeling like the budget is, is crazy, is we are, um, the third lowest per pupil in the, in the twelve schools, it's actually all Kennebec County plus Skowhegan. Um, they're part of the Kennebec Dallas Superintendent's region, and I don't think that's a positive statement. We have twenty-four hundred dollars per student, less than area other, than the state, so all the other schools in the state are made. So if you take twenty-four hundred dollars, is it twenty-four, I'm gonna make sure I look at my numbers, yes, twenty-four hundred dollars below the state average. You take twenty-four hundred dollars times our eight hundred students in the pop, you know, in our population, that's a lot of money, that we are below the average for the state. So, I, it's, I mean, I think they need to know that our budget is up. I don't know how to graphically show that it's, you know, the, the increase from, I guess we could do historical data, we could do like a bar thing or whatever, but, you know, four point zero two, I think on its face feels like a lot, um, but the budget, the budget is really only up, um, the direct budget, the budget is up two point one three percent. And when you take away the, the revenue that we're not asking for food nutrition, it's up less than three quarters of one percent. So I think those are, to me, are the ones that we wanna associate hardest, but that's just what stands out to me.
I think that one through four, while they're not contradictory, they seem contradictory to somebody who maybe isn't really invested in, you know, doesn't have the historical look at this that, that the board has. Um, and so, I think that those are probably some of the more important ones, to make sure that it's easy to understand what you're saying there.
Graphically?
Yeah, the net increase is here, but the budget increase is here, the amount required is this, and the revenue is this. While it's all one big cohesive picture, it kinda looks like it's not.
Yeah, which is kinda why I put, I mean, number one was intentionally number one, but most people, I mean, like I said, a number of times, I've done this for a long time, they wanna know, um, what's the net impact, what's it gonna cost, what's it gonna cost the taxpayers, it's top of the bottom line.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and I was surprised it didn't come up more in the conversation from the, from the town council standpoint, or from anybody else saying, cause it's, we put it out there that, uh, we paid off the school debt service this year. So we, um, initially, somebody working on this budget with us was saying, well, this isn't real, because we're actually up another five hundred thousand dollars, because that's what we, um, that's what, how much the debt service was, so we, we cut five hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, yet we still increased it by, you know, whatever it is, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. That's, that's really short sighted thinking on my part, because if, if, I could have done this, put, if I put five hundred thousand dollars more in the budget, I would have, I would have had five hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue to put in. So, and, and I know this is overly stating it, but that, if that made the overall budget to budget increase eight percent, but the net increase to the, to the taxpayers was still four percent, which is what it would be, that's why I'm saying it's, it's not worth having that, sort of that discussion, because it's, it, it doesn't make any sense. I don't like the term wash, but that is as close to a wash as it really is. We get five hundred thousand dollars revenue, and we get five hundred thousand dollars of expenses, once this is paid off, this goes away. So we lose the expenditure, we lose the revenue, I mean, I don't know any easier way to say that, so that doesn't really, that's not a graphic thing I would put up there, but. So I think the bottom line, if I'm looking for the most important things, it's, it's those two, it, I don't know how to do all four, four of those, I have to think about it. Um, is what's the net impact, show it graphically, show it in writing, throw it in different, different modalities, and then the, the part about, um, we're a long ways behind, and I really wanna drive home that point that being third lowest per pupil is, is not a good statistic. You know what, if we were Coney or, or Gardner or, um, that, we, we could feel somewhat proud of that, cause we're big, but we're a small system. Every district has a Sue Fossett and a Jim Hodgson, you know, they, but they don't, when you divide up just our two positions by the population, by a smaller divisor, you get a big result, that's not what happens here in Winthrop. Just somewhere, our kids are being shortchanged.
And I think if you just did a random poll, I think the majority of the population doesn't know that we spend that much.
Well, that's why I wanna put it up.
Yeah, I guess, I really think they don't, they think we probably spend more.
Well, certainly the people who talk to you at football games, or talk to you, or the public in general, you know, think we, we spend too much money, or we have too much administration, or we have too much of this and too much of that, it's like, the, the statistics don't justify that. So the other thing that I, I just wanted to make note of, um, and I put it, it's on that sheet, but, um, it's part of the minutes, you know, the budget validation referendum is scheduled for Tuesday the thirteenth, and I put scheduled for the thirteenth. Um, that was gonna be the only, uh, item on the local agenda, but now they're gonna vote on the new, they have to vote on the town council number on that day. So there's two things that people have to vote on. I did note that it is here at the town hall, we've had that conversation, that it's not in the high school, um, anymore moving forward. And I still think there are people out there who think that we made that decision because, um, I was mad, or we were collectively mad at the, the, uh, uh, town council when they voted down the, the bond, it's just not true, it's just very sad that people still think that.
Um, I don't know how many of you watched the town council meeting, um, on Monday. But their budget workshop was, um, public works and police and ambulance and fire.
Fire, yeah.
And, um, someone brought up, I think the fire chief brought up that, um, people are constantly saying, well, you're a public resource, why can't we use your space? Um, and so it's not just us getting that, it's, it's kinda everybody getting that, well, you're a public resource, why can't we use your space? Why can't we have parties there, why can't we have this there, why can't we have meetings there? So it's not just a, let's use the school, it's a, let's use anything, this situation. Anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay, any questions or comments for Jim before we move on? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the following policies for second reading. D J R one, cash management and allowable cost procedures. J J E, student fundraising activities, and J J E B dash E fundraising summary form.
So much.
One second. Any discussion about these three policies?
You are.
Yep, so for our, let's see. D J R one, we have, there were no changes to that one. For J J E, under section A, we added a designate, a point number one. Student fundraising activities must be approved in advance by the building principal, and we added, or their designate in their absence.
And so the copy that you have, it may, it may be the incorrect one, which I
Yep.
I sent out to, I think, you three today. Principal is double struck on there for some reason, and highlighted, it's not supposed to that. It should say building principal or their designate in, in your absence.
And on page three, under section D, we changed the language. For P T As, boosters, and other parent groups must coordinate fundraising activities with the athletic director or activities director in order to avoid burdening local businesses and the community. And under I K F, I'm not sure we're going in order here.
Oh, we are not on I K F yet, we're on J J E B dash E, that's, that's where we'll end.
Oh, and then no changes to E because it's just the form, the J J E B dash E.
I just remind the board, and again, more for a, a public audience might look at this later, that during the, the first policy that was on here, D J R one, was the policy that the auditor recommended that we added. So that's where the, that's a new policy to us.
I do have a quick question about the form, J J E B dash E. In the middle, kind of, it says fundraising completion conference held between blank and blank on blank. Is this supposed to be between whichever organization and the athletic or activities director?
Or could be a, a, somebody who's holding it in the school on such and such a day?
So right here in coordination of fundraising activities?
Oh, between, yes, 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 but it's still the same thing, would be whoever is holding the event and whichever administrator or designate that he or she met with, and it says when. So for instance, it might say, it might say fundraising completion conference held between Alexis Desculius and Jay Doofour on blah, 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 for the
So this is for A one, then, of the policy? All student fundraising activities must be approved in advance by the building principal or their designate in their absence?
Correct.
Okay, but where is confirmation that this coordination of fundraising activities between the group and the activity director or athletic director was done?
It's not on the form.
Should it be? If it's something that we're saying must be done, how are we confirming that it was done?
I have to, I don't have to approve that, so, yeah, I don't know. I, I would be leery of going down that, that road, because I think there's probably lots of places where the process, the pro- process tells us what, the procedure tells us what we're supposed to do.
Sure.
I don't think it's intended to be a checks and balances totally. And I, I did, as I mentioned to the policy committee last night, this policy, the revisions to the policy and whatever were done by a subgroup of boosters and Joel did that, I don't know if any other administrators had anything to do with it.
Is the intent of the policy that D will happen before one A happens? Or does one A happen first and then D happens after?
I don't know that they were that specific, I think that's just the steps they were looking to have in there, and
I, my, my concern, and it's not a major one, but my concern is, somebody gets this form and they maybe don't think to look at all of the policy, and so they go and they talk to, say, Jay, and they say, you know, Suzie Q and Jay talked on this day, and then they go with it. Well, but did they make sure that they weren't burdening the local businesses and community? And if that doesn't matter, then why is it in the policy?
No, it does matter, but it's not, it's, it's up to the administrator who signs off on it to make sure that doesn't happen. And again, I'd say that's a bit of a slippery slope, because I think if we start looking at all the procedures and all the safeguards that are in there
Yeah.
that we're responsible for administratively
Yep.
and we start making forms to make sure we, we check every box and cross every T dot, every I, I think it's a, it becomes a real mess.
I'm just not a fan of having a rule or a law or a policy that's not enforced or enforceable, right? So if there's not something that you're going to enforce in the policy, then the language shouldn't be there.
Agreed, that's why it's in there.
So how are you going to make sure it happens?
The administrator who signs off on it makes sure, makes sure it happens.
Are you gonna remember without that written on here that you need to make sure that the local communities are not gonna be burdened?
For me?
For all, each of you? Would that be helpful, or would that be harmful to have something like that added on there? Will you remember? You have a lot of other things on your plate, is all I'm saying.
But I think we have a pretty strong sense of, this could be similar to a conversation I think we're gonna have next week, about practice, and I, I just don't think it's, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm just saying it's, I don't think it's, it's possible to have every sort of scenario covered in a, in a form when ultimately the re, the expectation is that the person who signs off on it makes sure that the policy and the procedures are being followed.
I'm not asking for that, but I think part of the intent of the athletic director or activities director is because they are a district-wide employee and not a school employee, right? And so Jay knows what the high school's doing, and Jolene knows what the grade school is doing, but they have, how they make sure that their stuff is not crossing.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm not understanding why that's, I mean, Jolene needs to make sure that the policy is followed and she's responsible for it. You know, any, anybody else who does one has to, has to be responsible for doing it, and, and, you know, it would be up to the administrator to say, look at it, say, so how are, where are you gonna get this money? Or where are you gonna get these supplies and make sure that it's not overly burdensome to the, to the community.
So should this, instead of saying the athletic director and activities director, say principal or their designate?
It's, it's all of them, so it could say that, but the principal.
Here's my thing, right? There have been some policies that have not been followed because either the person who was supposed to be following them didn't know that they were supposed to follow them, or they were not clear enough for them to understand what steps they needed to take, and that has caused some problems. So how do we make sure that that doesn't happen?
Well, I, 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 I'm not sure that I can recall that happening, but I, I don't think it's possible. Policies are intended to be guidelines, they're not like absolutely, if you don't, if you break a policy, you haven't broken the law.
Right.
You've broken the, you've, you know, you've, you've not followed the expectations, and to the extent that nobody points that out, that's problematic, but, you know, we are, we have administrators who are responsible for making sure those, the policy is being followed. Yeah, I hear you.
So
It's, yeah.
I just, I just feel like it's one very small thing to add to this, to make sure that it gets done. If it's in the policy, how do you make sure?
So I don't know what you would put in, you know, I, I'm not opposed to putting anything in there, it's actually more.
I guess, just to clarify, so you're, you're maybe, what I think I'm hearing you say is if the high school and the middle school and the elementary school go to one particular business, then that is kind of burdensome on that particular business, so I do see what you're saying.
Right.
Except that all comes to me, all of these come to, to me.
Yeah.
So
Do you have a suggestion?
Are you this arbiter here in D?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna make sure that they are, and, and it's happened, that has happened before that, well, bad example, but I think it makes the point, but we were talking about administrative reports, that, that was sort of very, it was a really good idea, people liked going in that direction, and then the reports almost became competitive.
Mm-hmm.
And so I was the arbiter there, because I'm the one that, I am the filter that goes through, and ultimately I am the filter here. If I hear from, you know, if I, and it may be in a bad way, the worst case scenario, when the, a member of the community comes says, you know, we've been getting a lot of requests from blah, 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 and I say, oh, I missed that, so we probably shouldn't be doing that, so, but, um.
But did you miss it, because you were looking at the form and you forgot, and did that happen?
No, especially not at that particular point, I'm very sensitive to that personally, but
Okay.
I, I'm not opposed to putting something in there, I just don't know what it would look like. And, and I already expressed my concerns about, I don't know where this stops.
And this is where Catherine said, you know, we're open to, and opening that up to members of the community as well. If there are suggestions, then, you know, please submit them.
I guess I'm just thinking, if we're gonna have this one that says fundraising completion conference held between, you know, the community member and the whoever on whatever, could we also have a checkbox that says they also coordinated with whoever this arbiter is?
How about we add just something that says, it doesn't have to be a checkbox, but it's just, or it could be a checkbox, that the procedure for fundraising was, was reviewed.
Sure.
We will put that right here.
Yeah, there's a lot of empty space right there.
I can make space. And I like a checkbox, although I'm not gonna make one.
My quick question, this info- information, like on policies and procedures, so if, like, whatever. I don't know how I wanna say this, so obviously there was an issue with this before, as to why we wanna fix this. So I, for myself, I can't give input on, on any of these policies and procedures if I don't know if there's been issues or, or whatever with them, so that I can come up with those creative ideas. So having that knowledge of this was an issue, the situation happened, then it would be able for myself to be able to look at this and how to better improve it, but if without that knowledge or information, I can't contribute anything, which is
So I was just gonna bring up that point, the, I'm trying to think of, when this first became an issue or brought to light was my first year, and that's when the boosters group asked to do, because they were aware that there was all these fundraisers that were going on now, nobody that was there at the time. Maybe Tiff, you might remember, but there were, there were things that were going on, and they were not coordinated in any way at all. And the, the boosters felt that they were, whatever, it just, there were, there was no coordination. And that's specifically why that piece is there, that, you know, there's gonna be a process, there's a form you're gonna fill out that says we are, we have, we have, it's, it's not the wild, wild west. You can't just go out and decide you want something, and that's kind of what was happening. And it's what I, I really like about our boosters, our boosters groups are really for all middle school, high school. Everything that happens, and not just sports, so even though it may be a little favored towards, towards sports, but they would not say, because I asked them that specifically, but they, they needed to be sort of a sense of we can't just go out and fundraise for summer basketball or for, you know, whatever. That's exactly where that came from, that's the history there, so it took them a while to come up with this form, but
But those type things are shared amongst the board, if we get an email that, hey, the situation arise, and this is how we took care of it, so that we're kind of aware that those are going on.
Usually, as we go through the, some of the history about why changes comes up in the policy committee. It really didn't here, because this is kind of, both Catherine and Alicia were sort of, came on after the fact, so we didn't really have that conversation, but I think
This wasn't a current issue, it was an issue that just
But it took a long time to get to, to this table. So I, who made the move, you two first, are you okay with making that change to put a checkbox in it for procedure for J J E? It should be J J E though, right?
Before you move on from that, you have a comment in the chat regarding the fundraiser form?
Oh, yeah, Stacy was part of it, so, yeah. Stacy, do you wanna jump in, or you just type something in?
Nope, I just wanted to share that, you know, Joel does have a ongoing Google Doc with all of, all of, anybody that's doing a fundraiser at the high school level, at least that I know of, and he does put it in what businesses they've talked to, because that's originally why the boosters was created, so that everybody wasn't going to businesses one after the other, especially if the boosters is, is, you know, sport boosters is raising money for the athletes, but not every individual sport was going out and advertising and asking for, for donations.
Thank you.
So we're, we're just looking for something that would be more coordinated.
Okay, thank you. Are you okay with a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Yes, Tiff?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amended four to zero? Okay, so that's it for old business, new business, discussion about the superintendent evaluation process. Catherine and I still need to get together to make sure that the process that we used last year is the same process that we're gonna use again this year. She had texted me, I had emailed her, then we went on vacation, she hasn't gotten back to me, so we will have that discussion before our next meeting. Last year, for the two of you who were not part of this, it was done through a Google Doc and then returned to me so that I could tabulate everything. As far as the administrative part, for me, that was a lot easier. I think for the majority of the committee, the board last year doing it electronically was relatively easy. I think, you know, there were, you know, one person who was not super excited about doing something online.
It's faster.
It's a lot faster.
Easier.
Yeah. So unless you have a concern about doing it through that type of shared dot, you each get your own to provide your feedback and you send it back to me, and I tabulate everything. So unless you have some kind of a concern with that, but you'd like to talk to me about something between now and our next meeting, then I think that's our plan. I think the discussion that Catherine and I need to have is just to make sure that the questions that we used last year are the same questions that we're gonna use again this year.
And we would do this on the May seventeenth.
Yep. Yep.
Question from me?
Yeah.
Last year and the year before, you twisted my arm and made me write a self-reflection.
Do you not want to, is that what you're saying?
No, actually I have a lot to, I mean, this, we've done a lot this year, so I, I'm okay with that, I
I think a self-reflection is important so that, and it doesn't need to necessarily be for the five seventeen meeting. If you wanna have it for the first meeting in June after you've had a chance to kind of digest what the board have to say to you, it might be fine.
Ideally, I'm not making any promises, but ideally you would tab it next Wednesday so that you can keep that in mind as you do your Google Doc.
I think especially for some, especially for the two of you as newer members who aren't really sure about what's gonna happen in there, you likely haven't been keeping tabs all of, you know, past four months of, oh, that needs to be part of my evaluation, oh, that needs to be part of my evaluation. So having that self-assessment is super helpful. We've done it a couple of times, so
I don't mind doing it, it's hard.
No, but it's easier when you have that done before, we do ours, it's much easier.
It's hard, because I don't, I don't know what I've done, no, I'm just kidding.
I'm not writing. It, it really is helpful, especially for the newer members who, like I said, didn't know to kind of stock that away. Even if, today's the twenty-sixth, right? And when's our next meeting?
Next Wednesday.
Okay, so even if you have to email it to us after next Wednesday's meeting, I think that that's fine, as long as, you know, everybody has a chance to review it and put their information, then the doc can send it back to me.
I actually don't mind doing it, and, and the reason I say that is, I do the same thing with the administrators, and haven't done a good job with it the first few years, but it's a, I can't, I mean, the, the evaluation, if nothing else, should be a document of the, of the things that have been done. I can't, I mean, the the evaluation, if nothing else, should be a document of the of the things that have been done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, at least on the administrative level, so, um, you know, if if I want you to consider giving me credit for doing anything.
Mm-hmm.
Then I can't expect that you're just gonna know it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this something that should be included in like the, uh, intro packets for new school members so that we can have?
Well, I'm.
Should we pay attention or?
Well, you know, that's not a horrible thing to think about, but you can think about that and see, um, how we would go about doing that, that might not be a bad idea. Yeah, for the orientation packet. I guess the only concern that I would have is that if the board or the bike, uh, the chair or the vice chair decides that they wanna change it.
Mm-hmm.
Then you would have been doing your, but at least you'd have something to think about.
Well, I think the process, because we just redid and and Colleen added this to you guys, the evaluation of the superintendent, we just changed it, um, in twenty twenty-one.
Right.
So it's fairly recently changed and, uh, it does sort of spell out.
Pretty much, yeah.
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 It would be nice if things didn't change all the time.
I think that's a, that's a great suggestion, um. I don't see anything wrong with it, we'll talk with Catherine, I don't think she will either, um. We'll have an answer for you before the next meeting, has that time?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, any other questions or comments about the superintendent evaluation process? Okay. Um, I will entertain a motion to elect Chelsea Crockett as the Winthrop High School math teacher for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Okay. Okay. Discussion, Jay, do you have anything to say?
Uh, so we we interviewed Chelsea in March, um, I think we're very fortunate to get some strong math candidates, not only that early, but just to get some math candidates at all, let alone strong ones, so. She's, has a few years in education, uh, coming from Nakomis, I believe, um, really wants to move to the area, um, and has some really strong aspirations. Has worked with some some really difficult kids and she's worked with a lot primarily at ninth grade. Uh, teaching Algebra One, which is her wheelhouse, so we're really pleased to have her coming on board, so, um, very excited.
Uh, how long has she been a teacher?
Two years.
Yeah, so this, coming with us will be her third year.
Um, and where did she go to school?
The Nakomis, which is.
No, no, college.
Oh, Farmington.
Okay.
Of course.
I just had to make sure.
Yeah.
I'm a little partial.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any questions or comments about this motion?
The only thing I have, not, I kind of, you know, what happens, this is a critical position we need.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, what happens if we're having some major budget issues that not get passed?
Well, this is a, um, this is, we have that, we can't run school without this next year, so.
Right, exactly, exactly.
You know, we had the same thing, we, as we advertise for other, you know, positions and stuff, we need these positions, so.
We'd have to shuffle somewhere else.
We'd have, or we would not, yeah, we'd have to to not.
Just make it happen.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to tell them, I'd like to, you sit last, no, I'm just kidding.
All those in favor? Okay, four to zero, welcome Ms. Crockett, Chelsea Crockett. All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to move the first year probationary teachers to second year probationary status.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, as a reminder, this is a confidential list and we will not discuss it in public. If you have any questions, you can contact Jim to ask them, um, as can directly. Um, any public questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, four to zero. Um, I will entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to move the second year probationary teachers to continuing contract status.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Same discussion as before, any public questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Four to zero. Okay, um. I will entertain a motion to approve the outing club overnight field trip to Adventure Bound on May twelfth through fourteenth of two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Um. Sarah.
Do you have any questions based on, I don't know what version you have, because we didn't have access to the school, okay.
We.
So we didn't have access to the school van, so, um, I have some parent volunteers who are willing to drive, um, and my obstacle, my car's been approved to drive too. So that's not on the bottom there, um, I did send Colleen today the the updated version, but that's that's the only addition to that.
Okay, so the van's just not available for this trip?
No, it's being used for a tennis match on Friday, I think, and we'll be back till eight o'clock at night, so it'll be too late for us to head up Friday.
So private vehicles?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And so, uh, if you approve it, then I'll have them fill, um, the parent fill out the form that needs to be filled out. Yeah, I have, I have that in mind, yeah.
Okay, all right, um, thank you, any?
It's the same trip we did last year.
Okay.
And unfortunately prom is the same weekend, so our numbers are pretty low this year, but, but we could only take ten students anyway, because it's such a popular event, so.
Okay.
We have seven, yeah.
You have seven?
Yeah.
Is it possible that you'll give the extra three, or do you think probably not?
Um, probably not, I, there are, there was one kid, when are we going up to Ustis, and we went last weekend.
No.
Uh, you know, so some, you know, you remind kids, but it's, they don't happen on their memory, so, we'll see.
Uh, any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, thank you, have so much fun, guys.
Thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve policy I K F graduation requirements for first reading.
So moved.
Second. Okay, um, Alicia, discussion please?
Um, yes, so we on I K, I K F.
Yeah.
We changed the language.
Can I find it here? Like it's on page two.
On page two?
This should be the last thing in your packet. Okay.
Uh, basically it was, um, we changed the fifteen hours per year to sixty.
And and you removed the fifteen per year requirement. Um, so my understanding is that this, um, makes it so that if a student happens to volunteer for sixty hours in their freshman year, they are done with that credit requirement, and then if they decide that they wanna volunteer more, they absolutely can, but they don't have to every year, right? Okay, excellent.
I think as Jay described, um, before, so talked to staff, that this was, fifteen years was a pacing guide.
Yeah.
Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily what was expected, I just, we wanted to make it a little more open for students to, you know, to meet this. When did you get your sixty hours in online?
First week of school.
For a semester?
For me.
Mine, mine was actually a little tricky because of COVID, but they also waived those years, but, yeah, it was.
Yeah, that's right.
It's easier when you, it's also a lot easier to get your volunteer hours if you are able to drive yourself, so that also allows some immediacy for maybe the underclassmen who can't, don't have the freedom to do that, so.
Yeah.
I think my only concern, and I talked with Jay about it, um, before our last meeting when we talked about this, was how are you gonna handle those kiddos who wait until the last second to get their sixty hours in, and how are you going to address that and make sure that they don't fail that portion, and I got a great answer, so I'm not worried about that.
And we had a, uh, that was a meeting that you weren't here, but we had a really good, um, Steve.
Steve McDermott.
McDermott, uh, came on, and he had a very similar concern.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I thought we had a nice conversation as a board about that, and, you know, that's, we have to pay attention to those things, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
I I, you know, it, it talk about putting them behind the eight ball, so if they don't get fifteen credits their first, you know, fifteen hours their freshman year, does that mean they're in trouble?
Right.
You know, it shouldn't, but it it, it, the fifteen is, like I said, was intended to be a pacing guide, and.
Yeah.
We just, it's like anything else in dealing with graduation, we need to make sure we're paying attention to it.
Yeah.
They get to the end of their sophomore year and they've got none, which would be really hard with the way, and this is what was part of the conversation, uh, with Dave Caring and the other things that are that are scheduled at the high school. It's really hard to to not get the majority of your volunteer hours, and you have to intent, be intentional about not going to school and not doing things that, you know, school is structured for them.
Right, my my concern was there are some families that are not inclined to volunteer, for whatever their reason is, they're busy with other things or they just don't think about it, and so how do you make sure that they they are taken care of, and I feel pretty confident that there's not really a question. Um.
I have a question, so is this effective the class of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four? Because of the, because of the, um, personal finance?
Oh.
Change, because, so, yep, so it'd be effective for the class of twenty twenty-five, because the current, you know, twenty-four. This year's current juniors don't have to take personal finance, right?
Right.
For the class of twenty.
Twenty-four.
Four, yes, yes.
Yes, yeah.
So it would, this, these requirements would start with a class of twenty.
Volunteer requirements.
Five.
This was, we're talking specifically.
Because of the personal finance change, because you're saying the current juniors don't have to take personal finance, that was a decision made in the previous.
Yeah.
And the reason I say this is because, you know, we have to make sure kids are meeting standard, and also, like, NCAA will look at these policies to make sure kids are taking, doing the right credit, so. Make sure you get it right, but if you could think it through, that you put in effective class of, whatever that is.
I think those adjustments have already been made.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They were made prior to the.
Yeah.
Is it said in there somewhere?
Uh.
Well, the only change that was made was to the volunteer, um, pacing, it was the.
No, the the personal finance isn't a requirement.
She's concerned about the fact that it doesn't specifically say here that this part doesn't take effect until the class of twenty twenty-three.
And I would not, um, again, as, so you or no, Catherine, one, I think the few things we have to put in, we have documentation that the school, that the board has acted on that waiver. Um, I I don't think we should be changing the policies every time we have an exception, we have minutes that that reflect those exceptions, and that has happened.
Okay, because it it affects the electives and the, um, so essentially, the current juniors need five and a half elective credits and three social studies credits.
And I think their their argument when they talked to this to do for initially, and probably to you as well, was
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
was that they are already planning on not, um.
No, I understand, I'm just thinking like, if NCAA, because I've done the trainings, they go and they look at all of our requirements.
Mm-hmm.
So if they were to go in and saw that, oh, this kid needs personal finance and they didn't take it in high school, they could potentially be ineligible.
Do they, when the NCAA does that, do they just say they didn't do it, have a good day, or do they contact the school and say, hey, they didn't do this? And is that an opportunity for you to say, yeah, but we waived it for that class?
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, it has to be documented, I, it's a, it's a, it's a, uh, I'm just concerned particularly as we spend a lot of time doing these policies, that every time we have an exception.
Mm-hmm.
That we have documented over here, that we also have to document it over here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't, I don't think we wanna do that.
Like, it can also be put in the handbook too, so that, that's fine, but I just want people to know that, you know, next next person looking at the requirements, it's crystal clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the details, the details go in the, in the handbook, and those changes have already been made in the handbook, reflected in the handbook, um.
The changes are made to the handbook.
Correct.
Every year.
Which is an extension of the school committee policy, because the, the, each school's rules or policies are not necessarily in board policy. That's why we have our individual handbooks that that are referenced in the board policies, that kind of expand upon these kind of things. And that change has already been made.
A different way of saying that maybe is that, um, handbooks can't, um, circumvent policies, you know, they are.
Correct.
The program is not used to, I just. Just so you know that what this says will, is not what kids need to have graduate with next year.
We are aware.
It's different, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you have something?
She has something, oh, sorry.
Hi.
Um, just, I I wanted to, I've spoken with Steve McDermott, um, and I wanted to bring this, just for your reference, I told him I would share. Um, his larger concern is around families experiencing homelessness.
Mm-hmm.
And their inability to potentially, uh, transportation may be an issue, where they're sleeping at night may be an issue. And volunteering may be the last thing on their plate at this moment. And so if there's any way where we can put language in that says waivers can be granted upon extenuating circumstances or something like that, whereas, you know, superintendent Jay, potentially myself as the McKinney Bento homeless days off in the district, would have some level of ability to say, hey, you know, I, they're struggling to get this. I'm guessing, I know that they're on our list, you know, I think we should waive that without bringing it to the student's attention, like, hey, we know you're homeless, or like, you don't, you don't have to do this, like, that should not be the case, it's, it's done with dignity and respect, so that behind the scenes, it takes a little bit of pressure off a family or a child that needs to graduate, and this might be just that barrier because of homelessness.
I do.
And that.
Yes.
And then alternative way to earn that credit? Because it is a credit.
I think we have a little bit more, and and you referenced it last time, Jim, when you, when you spoke, when we made this change. I think we have a little bit more work to do with this particular policy around community service and the blanket that it is.
Mm-hmm.
So this is my first sort of chip at at this, maybe looking at some waivers or a method of tiering it or how, but I think that's a discussion as, you know, a a a larger group of us and some work, um, to kind of look at how we might tackle that.
So the interesting thing about about, uh, main law with with respect to credits is that, um, I think it is a common misconception that I award credit or that you award credit, um, principal, high school principal awards credit. Um, so I I think we just have to be careful about how we, how we award that, because we, you know, it, he should not make a, you know, waive a policy or a requirement for credit without my being involved in it and within you as well. But it's a, it's a, it's a process I think a lot of people don't understand.
So. It would probably be helpful to the policy committee before we bring this for second reading, to have some thoughts from you about that. Um, because it would be better to have this policy as close to finalized as possible instead of having to revisit it again soon.
That'd be great.
Um, because hopefully we don't revisit this for another five years, because we don't have to, right? Um, kind of a situation, um.
Uh, I, Kelly, I'd be happy to meet with folks, I think.
Well, the next, next policy meeting is is the tenth, May tenth, so, we did do, I forgot to say that, I'm gonna put that in the minutes. Under the policy committee, uh, we're meeting from four to six, um, you're welcome to be part of that, that'd be great.
Is it possible that that particular one can be later, because I don't get off the bus till, and I'd love to be a part of of that policy.
What time do you get off the bus?
Uh, well, by the time I get off the bus and drop it, I'm not ready to roll anywhere else until about four thirty.
Okay, um, how many other things are we doing during that policy meeting and could have been put later in the doc?
Um, at this point, we have a list of all this.
We had a discussion, yeah, we had a discussion with Catherine, because she wasn't sure if she could be do the four or the four thirty, because she thought maybe she had another meeting.
Yeah, sure, so it's kind of least get a form.
Yeah, so should we push it back to four thirty to six thirty, knowing that Catherine maybe can't and that Ivy is really interested in being involved and can't?
I think there are plenty of other policies that are gonna be in there that will will make that not a problem.
Awesome.
Excellent, thank you all, I appreciate that.
That list is pretty extensive.
It is.
Yeah.
We we knocked off quite a few last night, I feel good about that work, but.
Um, I think, yeah, because there is already language here about alternative methods for earning credits, and maybe there just needs to be one piece in there that says, well, I mean, it kind of is here, a student can earn credits through independent study approved by the guidance counselor, teacher and principal and monitored by the teachers of the subjects to which the independent study is related. That could be that overarching, it's already there, and those McKinney Bento type students or students who are just struggling in other ways, even if it's not homelessness, um, can have an alternate for some or all of that sixty hours.
And I want to reinforce what you said earlier, I just look at this policy, I knew we'd seen it a lot, but this was revised in two thousand fifteen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen, twice in the same year, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, so.
That's too many times, like, we're not able to get to other policies, because we continually are revisiting this one, and I get that sometimes things really have to be revisited that often, but this, you know, this shouldn't have to.
Yeah.
Um, so, do you think you can make it to that meeting, or if not?
If not.
Do you think you could send an email to the policy portion?
I'll, I'll come early and and try to leave so I can make my kids game.
Okay.
I'll, I'll be here.
Any other dis- Any other discussion about this as a first reading before we move on? Okay, all those in favor of the first reading? Four to zero, thank you. And. Okay, suggested additions to future agendas by school board members. Anything you think you'd like to have added to the next or future?
I don't know if I'd like to have it added, but maybe more of a question of like, kind of like the year to date, like behavioral data of students. Maybe some that are withdrawn or suspensions. And the, and like the dropout amounts? Just like to see where like the community's at and the students that are struggling.
Megan, do you think that's something that you would be able to gather?
Either her or Jay.
Yep.
Okay. Anything, okay, Alicia? Tim?
Tim, I have a, I'm, I'm.
Go ahead. That was.
Well, no, I thought, this was where I, you started talking, I thought you were gonna suggest and, and thinking that this might be a good idea too. It's been a couple of years since we had a presentation for main school management, maybe we should consider a boardsmanship workshop.
Okay.
Just with all the changes the last couple of years, it'd be nice to see what, what we need to do as a, as a board to help improve things and see where things are at.
It's funny, because we were just talking about that yesterday, you were following that policy meeting too with Catherine.
Okay, excellent. I don't have anything to add. For that portion. Member comments, Tim?
Just say my last thing about the pitter patter went well, we had kids in grade school, middle school and high school attend, some staff were there. Like to see that continue to grow every year, more and more people, there'll be nice community event, but it is a fundraiser for the class of twenty, twenty-four.
Do you think staff, staff were involved too?
Yes, she's staff, we had it.
Okay. Kathy?
I was.
Um, we have just a few items left on our, on the wish, the Amazon wishlist that the National Honor Society has. Love to get those last few materials and then put together our busy bag and send kids.
I don't think I've seen this list, so if you could share it with us, that would be super cool.
Oh, yeah. Yes, please.
And I bet we could help you wipe that out right back, between us and our friends, right?
All right.
And where are these busy bags going?
To, um, a, the bookmobile on the other location.
Okay. Okay, and I don't have anything new to add, there's no executive session tonight, and so without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned at seven fifty-two.